Your fire departments, Charles Mullins made a motion, Charles Gollum voiced a second motion to prevent travel from May 10 at the conference on its base in Louis, October 25th through 30th, the motion carried unanimously. Notice Dale Holleyfield and his wife requested the board to void tax sale on his property. Tax assessor was present. Motion, the board requested the board term of view the case before decision could be made. Notice the Lincoln Justice for fines collected for the month of August 21, 2020 to September 20, 2020 was $1,282.74. American Municipal Services collection for the same period was $1,003.63, there were 229 new cases opened during the period with fines in an amount of $66,913.50, with $10,673.25 from the new cases collected. Forty-one dismissals were recorded for that period. Page two, inter fund transfer. Charles Gollum made a motion, Charles Mullins voiced a second motion to transfer $7,469.16 from the General Fund of Fund 126 County Ambulance Fund. The transfer was necessary because the EMS grant county receives and uses type of ambulance has not been large enough to cover the debt service payments. Motion carried unanimously. Notice the county received notice from OSCAR that LS 1351-16-Buckler Road had been disapproved. Notice the Office of State Aid Construction also sent notice that $184,800 additional advanced credits for the board term have been made available. Charles Mullins made a motion, Charles Gollum voiced a second motion to adopt the following resolution to claim the necessity to request estate and state bonds referenced in section 73 of House Bill 1730, 2020 regular legislative session be issued and that the $150,000 reference therein be dispersed to the county. Proceeds will be used for the construction of the multi-use building and the equipping and furnishing of that building and for the purchase of two automobiles for the sheriff's office, the motion carried unanimously. Charles Mullins made a motion, Charles Gollum voiced a second motion to finance John Dear, 3TNSL backup purchased by B2 for $102,750, the B2 supervisor wants to make a down payment of $50,000 financing remaining, $50,750 for three years. The purchase clerk is authorized to take books on financing for three years and to choose the lowest quote. The president is then authorized to sign the paperwork for motion carried unanimously. Asphalt bids, four bids received for asphalt for the 2020. First bid was from T.L. Wallace and their bid was $825,598. This bid was for the 861 tons of asphalt at $188 a ton. Second bid was from Dickerson and Bowlin, their bid was $1,400,675, or 6,861 tons at $175 a ton. Third bid was from AIPAC and their bid was $1,118,746.50 for 6861 tons of asphalt at $156 a ton. Fourth bid was from Custom Paving and their bid was $817,959 for 6,861 tons or $119 a ton. Charles Gollum made a motion, Charles Mullins voiced a second motion to take bids under advisement, motion carried unanimously. Charles Mullins made a motion, Charles Gollum voiced a second motion to remove Greenfield Road from State Aid Roads in place on county road system in order to qualify for LS B payment, motion carried unanimously. Page three. MacDill Road and B3 close for Heavy Holling November 15th, until supervisor read up from Charles Mullins made a motion. Charles Gollum voiced a second motion to close MacDill Road and B3 November 15th to Heavy Holling. Supervisor shall determine when Heavy Holling resumes, motion carried unanimously. Notice is hereby given that all roads that are within either county have been ridden and inspected by all supervisors. Resolution for Domestic Awareness Month in October, Charles Mullins made a motion, Charles Gollum voiced a second motion to declare October 2020 as Domestic Awareness Month and adopt resolution stating same, motion carried unanimously. Notice B1 will enter private property of Daniel Brazier to remove the tree causing hazard to B1 road. Notice Wayne Curry on Matt Road will be dug in dirt to B1. Charles Gollum made a motion, Charles Mullins voiced a second motion to declare 16 concrete culverts as surplus property imposed for bids. Bids to be open on October 5th, 2020, the motion carried unanimously. Accept bids on custom paving for asphalt. Charles Mullins made a motion, Joe Attenda voiced a second motion to accept custom paving and their bid was $817,959 for 6,861 tons of asphalt or $119 a ton. Acceptance was done upon view by county engineering purchase clerk, motion carried unanimously. Charles Gollum made a motion, Charles Mullins voiced a second motion to adjourn until October 5th, 2020, attend a buck AM, motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, Joe. Do we have any changes, comments on page one? Only these, comment changes, I don't think can be temporary and important. Let's take your part timeline of that motion.
That's what they had on the hill of sheep.
Anything else on page one? Page two?
Since I wasn't here, I got a couple questions on page two. Up here on the change in the money over for the ambulance, I want to talk about that when they come up in a little while. And then on the, oh, down here on the asphalt bids, somebody's terrible math. T.L. Wallace was at 825, at $188 a ton, and Dickerson and Bowlin was at 1.4 million, at $175 a ton. I don't think that adds up somehow.
188 is not right.
I think it was 118.
Yep.
We just need to fix that in case somebody ever comes back with it.
Good call.
That's all I have.
Says on T.L. Wallace.
Yeah. He was 118, not 118.
118 still 188. Anything else on page two? Page three.
You want to give them all that? Yeah, down here on the bottom, I probably don't think they can make that number that same.
You dug.
I'll go pay you guys.
Right. Do you remember Charles Gollum?
I do.
Move except me.
I'm good, I did.
All in favor?
Make a motion to second document.
Second. Austin and Slick to approve the document, all in favor. Thank you, George. Robert, come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
I spoke to Kenny earlier about this communication trailer thing over there in the week. We've got two 16-foot trailers at the barn that are enclosed that we decided that would be a good fit for doing the trailer with the technology and stuff that we have. I think that'd be, so that knocks down a good bit.
Wow.
Yeah. And I think that would be the best way to go on that. Because I got the guy supposed to be, he's supposed to be here later today. I was hoping he'd have me a quote finished before this morning, but he hadn't gotten done yet. What it would take to swap it all over, so I should have that this week sometime. And I'll get a quote on what it will take to build the inside of it, you know, the disc and the cabinets and stuff. So I think that may be our best option on that.
And one of the trailers had the roof system.
Yeah.
And that'll eliminate having to get a big truck in order to put a trailer.
And on the truck, the only ones on the state contract this year, the guy just.
Good thing it has a big antenna on it.
It does got antennas in it.
Doesn't have an antenna, it's good.
That big antenna goes on the back of the big truck.
So you want these?
No, not even such a thing. Yeah.
It's third quarter time, 2017.
That's all I have to know, 2017.
Yes, on the state contract. Robert, just, I mean, just when that guy comes in with those bids, I mean, I think you chose the best way in a way to, I think that'll work out fine, just third quarter time.
We need to do something yesterday that will let them start moving the thing around.
Do we need a diesel?
No, no, the diesel, the diesel they tell the agents, I don't want no diesel. I can pull them with that weight.
Do we have that?
I have, I have budgeted in at least purchase for your minutes.
Yeah, that's on it.
I made a motion to sell, who was this even with the?
The owners. Pine Bill, no, it's Pine Bill, I'm sorry.
On the Hammersburg?
Pine Bill, yeah.
Let me see, it's on page one.
Needs to make a motion to get the quotes and the purchase clerk accept the list.
Before we move forward, I may want to add this to the list.
Oh, that doesn't have the name.
When we go ahead and add that, him carrying it to have a light to off, we're only running the same, so we just have to do that later.
Yeah, state contract, can't add it. Not where you say, Steve?
Needs to authorize Ashley getting the quotes for financing and you signing the.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's included in the notice.
Put that in the minutes, Joe. Don't authorize any of that, and actually get the quote from you to sign it for finance.
For five years.
Five years.
Got a motion, could we get a second?
Second.
All in favor. What else you got for us, Robert?
What are you going to declare those other things surplus?
We've already had them.
We have. Not the truck, but the truck.
The big truck, or that glow ball that I remember.
Yeah, we need to.
On that, on that flat truck, before we get rid of that thing, does anybody have anything that you call on that show can at all? That's a nice trailer, you gonna give it away if you're without the business.
Yeah.
We might want to just want to be, all the biggest, just buy it somewhere else from.
That's right, you can haul your trash to Boot House or something.
That'd be good for that.
What else could you?
What about the big truck? You gonna do it? And where would you get the best price on it? Well, we need to wait till we get it cleared out. Jason from Traxxwest, he can sell that to you right there.
Okay. So, yeah, we carried out, did we go through that most? We did. Okay, what else you got for us, Robert?
Other than the printout from the ambulance thing the other day, that's, that's all I've got for y'all, if you want to hang around till they know.
They out here, so just hang around. How about that service? Y'all come on up. Good morning.
Morning.
Good job. You want to run?
Morning.
Good, good. We, we ask you all to come up, because we have some issues with this service. Y'all want to give us an update. Robert, you come on around too. Y'all want to give us?
Yes, sir.
Y'all on that.
So, I'll thank Ross.
As far as the times and everything, anything you've ever done, we just didn't have many trucks.
So we didn't have a paramedic truck that day. We're, right now, we've got one more hiring, one that's fixing to pass as national paramedic container, and one other that's offered to to try to bring along, we'll protect this for us. And so currently, we had, we had one not long ago who left us to go to a different part of the state. We also had one get injured while doing CPR on cardiac arrest here, who was out on work with the comp with torn rotator cuff. So we're trying to work through some of those issues as far as losing those two people immediately and hiring some to backfill right now. So, but I talked to Holly yesterday, who's our HR lady up in Oxford, and she is moving as fast as we can to get those new ones on board.
Okay, I know our contract says that we should have three trucks in the county, and some of those are not, whatever.
ALS.
ALS trucks, but I know some of the times when keeping three trucks in the county's not going to be possible, and I think we've had that with all of that service. But what we would like for y'all to do is do the best you can in making sure that house keeping in the county will be covered.
Well, and that's the reason we put that basic truck up that day, is I would rather have a basic truck up and running to take people to the hospital than to not have any truck, because we're down a paramedic. So, and we do that in all our counties, even though, you know, other places will just shut the truck down if they don't have a paramedic. I, I choose not to, because if somebody needs an ambulance, it's better to have something in some way to the hospital than just nobody to show up. So, the, the basic truck, it can transport, but it don't have a paramedic on it, so they can't administer any medical functions, so I'm not ambulance spurred. They can do more than what some people think they can do. EMT basics can do the oxygen therapy, can check blood glucose levels, you know, sugar levels, can assist patients with their home medications, epinephrine stuff, or inhalers and all that kind of stuff, but they can, they can perform some basic medical functions.
Those, anybody, y'all have any questions for?
So today, how many ambulances?
There are three here, there are forty here.
How many ALS?
I would have to look in the schedule.
Did you know? Listen, or listen.
Do you know? If they're all made today or?
I haven't checked with them.
There are three ALS trucks up today.
Who's that?
Yes. Hey, this is our county supervisor. I didn't see the fact that.
You must have asked you some more.
He's the one we need to know.
He's the one we need to talk to. Clayton Cooper has been recently promoted to our Newton County supervisor. So, he will be available for y'all for any questions, and I can relate to incidents up there. But if you have questions about how many paramedic trucks we have up, what's going on, Cook will be happy to answer.
We probably have three up today, we'll have three up tomorrow. I was also going to tell you, we're currently in negotiations with two other personnel, one who's looking to come full-time, one's looking to come full-time. And one guy should be calling you in the next few days here to negotiate.
Okay. And just so y'all are aware, we did put up a $10,000 sign up for any paramedics that want to come to work for us.
And we have stepped up being more aggressive in our pregnant measures.
It's just trying to compete with a small pool of people across the state.
So the real problem is lack of personnel.
The real problem in the state of Mississippi particularly, it's a problem, actually, like the state of Mississippi a little bit more, because in Mississippi, the state health department says that paramedic schools can only go through the community college system. Other states, other people can teach from technical institutes or EMS districts like we have here in Newton County, but the state of Mississippi will not allow that. So right now, we fully depend on the community college network to produce paramedics throughout the state. And last year, out of the seven schools, they produced maybe 35 for the entire state of Mississippi.
So we need to talk to some legislators too.
Absolutely.
And staying and working through their organization, trying to get from those things like that.
We work every year with our lobbyists and state associations to try to get that change. This last year, we did get a change to where EMS districts can teach an advanced EMT class, which is one step above an EMT basic. They can do a lot of medication therapy, cardiac monitors, IVs, all that kind of stuff. So it truly is a benefit to the rural parts of the state of Mississippi more than the urban areas. We presently have one of those on our schedule to start teaching in January, and we can teach our own EMT basic classes, which we've already taught several. But under the law in the state, it says that paramedics can only be trained in both community college or by university medical center, which they choose not to, to do their paramedic program anymore.
That's correct, I was expecting staff. Staff-wise, we're much better, right?
Now we are. We were down to one for a little while there.
Six people out at one time?
Since everybody got it.
Yes. So now that everybody's got it and they're over, it gets much better.
Let me go back. I said seven community colleges in Mississippi turned out 35.
35 that passed the national registry exam. So they probably had 50 that came out last.
That's five first.
Yeah.
It's a very low average.
There are some schools up in north, especially someone up at Brown Balver County, Cohoma Community College, they're talking about not even having theirs anymore because they own that. You have to have a certain number of students in a classroom to make financial sense for the college. And last time I heard, they had four people that had applied.
He said they're going to have a double. He said for the town. They wouldn't do it. I think, man, what else is different?
What needs to be done to incentivize people to get into a program like this? I don't know. It's not that bad.
I don't know that I have an easy answer for you on that one. I've got a lot of history to deal with the community college system and paramedic schools. When I was with my previous employer, we could pay, and we do now, 100% for somebody to go to paramedic school. But when you send a student over to community college director for paramedic school and the counselor spends an hour trying to talk them into going to nursing school instead, that's a huge issue for our industry. So we're battling a lot of different fronts with it. But in our state association and our lobbying firm right now, we're coming up with a marketing campaign to try to push more people into this industry. But it's, I just, it's crazy, to be honest.
That's something to come through the state, I don't see you in the future just going to.
With the care money now, they did push a lot of that to the workforce development centers of the community colleges. So we are talking to some of those deans and presidents now about campaigning with them to try to recruit, because our, our school inside community colleges falls under the workforce development centers. And so we're talking to them now about doing a big recruitment campaign.
That's interesting. Wow, lots of stuff I want to take. Does anyone else have a thing for this guy?
I do.
Go ahead and say it.
Most of the time, we come in, or y'all come in, I know we do, it seems like we do a lot of questions, we're just trying to answer to our, our residents. But y'all took care of my mom about two and a half weeks ago, and y'all and guys done had some job roles, I think.
They took care of my mom anyway, after we fell off the roof.
Wish I liked you guys as being, not just.
But we're only as good as the people that work for us, and we have an excellent group of people here. I will give you all my phone numbers, if I have questions, call me. If I don't answer.
There he is, but now.
But I'll give you all my phone number before I leave. Unfortunately, I don't know right now, but I'll call myself. If you really have questions, call me. If I don't answer, if I'm on the call, then you're going to ask your phone, obviously. But leave a message, I'll call back. Within reasonable hours, if I don't get freedom till midnight, I'm back the next day.
His cell phone number is 769-229-5942.
And to have you out of what he was saying, in our recruitment, I just wanted to let you know, we're trying to recruit lawy people. We want to recruit people that have vested interests in Newton County, people serve people in Newton County. We're not trying to hire people to have been through every farm around here and then let go. We're trying to hire better people. We're not trying to just hire anybody.
What's his name?
Clayton Cooper.
Clayton.
Most of the time, people just call me Cooper.
That's what he's about, that's what I'm about.
Just thought that's what I mean, I was calling.
I know I've been kind of keeping up the real social distance last week. I know we've had two most every day after that, two ALS trucks. You got three today, is that third one dead from there? Is that full time?
We're talking three, as many as the communities as we can. He spends most of his days marketing the schedule, probably with people on board. I managed to, but maybe it was day off to come here. The majority of the time, we do have eight, two ALS trucks up. If there's ever a time when there's one truck up and I'm all, I'm going to be on, there are going to be two ALS trucks up. If there's ever a day with like prison offense, with one person going down to workers comp, there just are no trucks, and I'm there, no questions asked, I'm trying to recruit a second. But we will have at least one, majority of the time, to some lucky rare occasion, we'll have three. We're working towards that.
Right.
Yes, sir. We're working to have three. If we don't have a third ALS truck up, I'm looking to get basics to come in and put up a basic truck for, if nothing more, inter facility transfers that they can handle to keep an ALS truck from being tied up.
How do y'all stay your basic truck, you didn't run a indicator or?
We try to, we try to have an ALS truck on each end of the county, Union and Newton.
And a paramedic in the middle of that.
Okay, well, just try, if there's one ALS truck, I put it in the category, centrally located. If there's two, I try to get them in Union and Newton. Sometimes I'm not able to do that, some people happen to work here, I can't work here. Ideally, that's what I try to do, is have logistically spread out to where we have better coverage of the new type of county.
But you are using a good kind of truck.
At the moment, we're trying to get staff to go to work, we put it up as a fourth truck, but we're not currently using it. We do use it for something, is moving supplies around from point A to point B instead of tying up an ambulance. But I'm just not going to put the medical supplies in my truck and take them around, I'm going to keep them in any medical vehicle from point A to point B. So we are using it for something like that, we're not currently using it as an ambulance.
Well, we do use it sometimes when we're doing, we have a primary truck, we didn't have one.
How many trucks did y'all, that was my question, how many trucks did y'all receive from the ambulance service that we just paid for?
One more. Think we got rid of the other one.
The other one was scrapped.
Yeah.
That was my question, transmission.
Anything else for this guy? Robert?
Think y'all will come and be just asses, just keep pushing hard as you can. Do you have any questions, Listen, since you actually work with them more than anybody?
No, not necessarily. It's where we're at now. Tomorrow might be a different story.
Tomorrow, y'all have a normal.
Appreciate you all, I know, y'all like, as you'll say, and knowing that we up here when we have a situation that's, that care us, and, but, you know, other times, things must be going pretty good. Appreciates you all and what y'all do do.
I have a question, we've got an awesome issue up on there, don't worry, we'll make it. I think y'all know that. I'm getting it from Kenny.
Run this, no?
I've been doing it for eight years. Y'all wear it, Mr. Randall Allen. When we're wearing him out, we're not wearing you out.
But that's all, thank you, thanks, fellas.
Thank y'all very much. We get you.
There it is.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you.
You mean great, though.
Listen.
I've got plenty of your old, I think, my could have gone with them some.
I just need to get more. I just need to get class and travel proof to send one of my full-time respektors to certification class. We have a year to be certified, the year's coming up. The class is going to be in viral, this department. The class itself is $399, but it's reimbursable, and then we have travel and.
Tell us the date on that list.
The date is going to be November 16th or 20th.
What's the name?
The name, the dispatcher?
Yeah.
Brooke Tanner, H.A. and Hannah Dior.
She don't drive that.
She does.
I need to catch the last one.
Tanner.
Hannah?
Tanner, H.A. and Hannah.
I thought this. All in favor? That's everything.
That's all I got today.
That's everything.
It's going, I can keep dispatchers.
Brian, you just hear a fucking.
He's hearing from shit.
You could sit a bowl.
Thanks for the dish. Just have a coffee, y'all make good coffees. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, okay. It's time to tell, you heard it, cross the box, sit a bowl. Track plus.
I'll come see you. Phil, I just want to stop by, introduce myself. I've dealt with most of you personally. Mr. Charlie?
How you doing, bud?
How you doing?
Good.
I need my driveway, please.
No, I'm just.
That's my thing, yeah. So.
I'm just playing, but, but he does do a good job, doesn't he?
Not on the driveway though.
Where? Around, you know?
You got that brick.
Look, fellas, I just wanna introduce myself, uh, work with Tracks Plus, uh, we're there to help you anything from a filter to a machine. Um, so anything that we can do, guys, don't hesitate to call. If y'all get in a bind and need something, if y'all need a piece of equipment to finish your job, just let us know, I'll bring it out there to you and let you run it.
Help me out, bud.
Yes, we, we sent Mr. Jackie a motor grader, so anything we can do, fellas, that's, that's all we wanna do. We wanna help this county, we wanna be a part of what's going on in this county. So, uh, if you guys would just give us opportunity, we'll be glad to help any way we can. Uh, we also have auction time back. What that is, is an online auction. You guys can set up a reserve, so if y'all need to get rid of any old equipment, you know, just let us know, we'll help you out any way we can.
All right, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Yes, sir, good to see y'all.
I want to have just one small.
Uh, uh, during the past year, or since December, we towed out three patrol cars. Uh, I mean, what I wanna request is that when we get the insurance money back, an insurance company that goes back into my bucket, so that general fund, so we can go try the first time. And I'm pretty sure that three old wreck patrol cars barely gonna buy, if it buys one new patrol car.
Right.
Yeah, maybe. That's all I had, the request would be put back in budget stuff, your own thing. Three?
Uh, three months.
No, no, since the first year. I can tell y'all this, we have spent.
I made that right, didn't I?
An enormous amount of money on repairs, especially when first took office, to get the old backup car running. And since that time, four of them have long motors, and they're so old and got so many miles on them, we're about to spend seven thousand dollars for a brand new motor for a car that's two hundred and forty thousand miles. I thought we spent, we had two brand new motors and new repairs and two transmissions and new oil. Now, since y'all approved my budget and since we're getting the vehicles from other entities, we've got five patrol cars ordered right now. But since COVID hit, the Chargers are gonna be available the middle of December. And the Durangos will be starting production the first of April, and then available a hundred twenty days after they start production. You can't find a twenty twenty, you can't find a nineteen, any patrol, any police bagged vehicle at this stage right now. So if y'all got any horses, we might, we might be asking to borrow them.
Kelly, going back to your comment about not putting the engines in, though, do you not think it might be cost effective to put a couple of engines in if you're gonna be April getting caught?
I did that with one vehicle already, and the luck I had with that, since the car was so old and had so many miles on it, I spent the money for the brand new engine and the transmission.
That's what I was scared of.
I don't wanna spend seven or eight thousand dollars for a new motor and then something else costs, gonna cost four thousand more thousand to replace that also. Then you got ten thousand dollars on a ten year old vehicle for two hundred and forty thousand miles. So.
For his first time, I'll make the motion to put that money back to his fund or even buy a car.
Whenever they come about.
But now, are you gonna sell all those through Gov Deals, or is that something Chris can help us with at off time?
Everything that we have surplus right now is on Gov Deals. Uh, we've got three patrol cars, three old tractor companies, and have monster bodies on there now.
Yeah, I love those, I think we'll give them more. Do you want it?
I said, let's go higher with you, though.
He is, I brought it, keep going.
Okay. So.
To Charles. Oh, you want me to say it too, folks?
Yes.
What was that?
Didn't need a lot, just a quick bunch of kids.
All in favor? All right, I appreciate it. Slow down a little bit.
Do our best.
Would, I know you just heard that. Let's see, light. Steve.
I need a motion to land the twenty twenty budget to actual pay off this school.
That's on our budget?
Yeah.
To a real number?
Yeah.
All in favor?
The mass educational webinars will start October twenty second. Instead, I have the follow workshop that have webinars, if you are interested, cost are twenty dollars per each class. We have registration forms that will go toward any, uh, C P D that may all want to get.
Could we all, like, be here at the courthouse and do that together at one time? We have to do this.
It's got a separate form for everybody that says twenty dollars each.
So the word, any classes, it's gonna be under fifty bucks. I'm not a mover.
Uh, classes, no.
And they would kinda get your certifications, or, or we can turn it into legislative area, but turn it.
Yeah.
To show that we all learned something. So when we ask for a raise, they can't say, we can hear it, so that.
They can just say, no.
Forms and functions of county government, overview of county purchasing laws, update on state aid road, roads and bridges, forecasting the twenty twenty one legislative session. That's the four classes available. Twenty dollars per member. So, like. Um, Sergeant Clark presented his aging account, George got a copy of it, that's required by law. Trustmark had the best rate for B twos purchased in the backhoe, police purchase bid was one point four two percent for thirty six months. President signed paperwork when we did it.
What's the entry status?
One point four two percent. Thing first, bid one point six eight, Bancorp South, two point four one. Uh, I need a motion to approve contract with Three Rivers, this is for the AS four hundred. Uh, you know, they keep the system up there and have a backup and a mirrored system, one in Tupelo, I think, and the others in Stark. The contract amounts fifteen thousand a year for five years.
We had the choice?
Unless you wanna buy a new system.
Well, I don't, so move.
Don't reply if we get the form yourself.
All in favor?
State aid, uh, county received state aid engineering estimate for LS V T fifty one fourteen in a amount of thirty three thousand four eighty seven thirty nine.
What is that cost?
I have no idea.
Anybody have a bridge that's being tacked?
Let's see.
That's about all that.
Some passing on.
That's it.
Is it that time read, brother?
I have no idea.
She don't have a road listed at here?
I didn't see it.
I don't see anything, but y'all probably didn't look at it. Last best one, twenty one, increased eleven thousand. Don't get rid, somebody's had it. I didn't know we had any bridge to be worked on since the one y'all pleased yet.
What, what do we need to do at this state justice?
Nothing, just, just, telling you we got it.
Well.
Y'all already signed it, that's fine.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Colonial construction was seven one twenty.
South Motor.
Not like the land that I'm.
Prepaid in twenty eighteen. I wanted that just, or nothing is over on it.
Well, it says on it prepaid twenty eighteen, they just gonna reverse.
Name of the jar with reason.
I'll just send the way to tag, asking.
This, this is all, this is gonna be on it, you can't.
Yeah, twenty eighteen.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
I need a motion to put the two thousand eight Charger that was totaled and the insurance company gave it back to the county. Joey wants to put it on Gov Deals.
Two thousand eighteen?
Two thousand eight.
Oh, okay.
That's long, you know, that one.
I don't know which one it was.
Who get a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
So, exhale.
And then I'll be the caller. Okay.
Can you get my caller?
What is concrete use?
White said that's not my hand, bro.
That's big three.
Yeah, you can start the bridge, you.
Yeah, they about there.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever.
You just lops that chalk down.
Big one, you get that tire, it's over time.
Yep, um, load break time?
Fourteen hundred, about twenty four.
Yeah, load break.
Yeah, exactly right. Thanks, sir.
Trying to get Jake's face on, right?
I told him, that was a good try.
I told him, Charlie, beat four, beat, beat five.
He did, he did.
Well, they're gonna come back and change it, cause they'll pull a two, I don't know.
I know, let's, they went, you bet by the car you're getting.
Got what now?
And that tree, now, I don't, I don't wanna be out there working, hopefully this weekend, if you want to go out, I don't worry about it.
If you don't get it before then, boy, you gonna tap the road, on road and three.
We're gonna love to see it.
You gotta get permanent to do that, if you want to be one.
But, uh, hey, I mean, we'll get it, I mean, don't go to the.
I'm just saying, for me.
Yeah, okay, we'll take that. All right.
We'll take that out of the, out of the.
I told her, this will lie a lot right now, so I guess you'll get one of those.
I'll take that, but, uh.
With that tree, I hope actually it on the ground.
No, I told her this will lie.
Well, he don't want it on home, too, I'll turn it down.
George, you got your. I've got something from May, she has to present her delinquent personal property mobile home, delinquent for the year, delinquent personal property taxes for two thousand and nineteen that have not been collected, a hundred and sixty three thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars, forty nine cents. Mobile homeless, thirty thousand, seven sixty eight, twenty two, just need a motion accepting that upon recommendation of tax assessor.
Somebody.
Say. All in favor? Joe, you said a hundred and sixty three thousand had been collected, it, it didn't, did that go to the tax sale or what?
No, no, there's none, all she can do is go in there and sell it, but y'all need to look at that, cause there's some significant names in it. But we did have the bids on the.
Oh, that's on the rock.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, she sells a mobile home, they get sold.
Yeah. Uh, do we have a selling?
No.
Uh, you say we have a bid, it's total for, for cover?
Yeah.
Are you on?
Now, let me, let me clarify, cause I saw, Steve, did you, did you type this up?
He put metal on his, his concrete.
It's what it was. It was advertised correctly, then. Okay, that's all I'm getting.
Yeah.
This, this one took up down on.
You jail. That's his chick, right?
This is a chick. So we already accept it, my container's a beating.
That's not right, that's gonna be the metal.
Yeah, so we didn't get one beating then.
That don't go in.
Yeah, he sent a jig part of this crap metal covers.
Well, it looks like you got something else in there.
Well, it's just, it's just taking on. You have to stay in there.
Can I, can I?
No, I'm taking.
You're right.
Bid on concrete cover, twelve dollars each for sixteen hundred and ninety two dollars. Some changing.
Brandon Bryan.
Brian Chaney.
Who is he?
Uh, I'm gonna figure it out. Brian, Brian Chaney.
No.
Yeah.
He didn't send a jig?
No.
Is that the only one?
Yeah. He the most accepted?
Somebody.
All in favor?
Get rid of.
Hey, I still, I don't need him, I still got one.
Got you, son.
I need, that's you, rent two brothers off.
There's a heavy, aren't there?
George, that's all we can have?
Yes.
Does anyone in the audience have anything? Joe?
Charles.
Thanks.
I don't know, I don't do that.
Sure, I'm good.
Thank y'all for the flying.
You were.
More than what you thought, you're about to see this.
Yeah. Okay, we do have one thing.
Yeah, y'all work, you ready?
That's the one.
Right, I mean, it's, you know, dangerous.
Fast right here until that came.
I mean, I'll, whenever. Never hold it, I thought.
Thanks, sir. On that, just now I meant to say that you was supposed to mention, or, and this, they have hold of this situation?
Yeah, I, I talked to, uh, I talked to several people about it, but I do have questions, cause I wouldn't, here, didn't have the benefit of hearing, uh, everybody's point and situation. But from, from my understanding, they, they tended to pay, and it was mailed and, and it showed up, and then some months later, it was, I guess, returned?
No, showed up for one day, the complete amount, the way I understood it.
Yeah.
Proceeding on and out for too much.
It showed up four days after it was due, and it didn't have a penalty on it, may send it back, is the way I understood it.
Send, send it back to the, to the bank or to the individuals?
Can't ask for that now.
I think they ended it back in the bank, pretty back to the bank, and then it was like made before they got their statement that the money was put back in.
They, they had moved, so before when the post office was out, going. Moved from Meridian to Correct County.
I think it was like fifteen dollars short of the amount when, when it came in, something like that, pretty small.
Right, well.
So it's settled in the tax thing? Which means they're gonna have another ten percent on that.
Right, I think, I think, oh, they, they mentioned something to say.
Chick.
Is it paying, why?
He's here.
I mean, the law is essentially, if, if the tax assessor made a mistake, uh, or was in error in, in any way, then the board can't forgive the penalties and entries. Uh, otherwise, that, you can't.
Well, Ben, it's really, what would you do on this? Yeah, check was sent, okay, say it four days later. Check sent back.
On the, uh.
The check was sent back to their bank.
Was sent back, was this, a ma, a letter mailed or a postmark?
Uh, I don't have no idea.
I think the postmark was about four or five days.
Four or five, cause the postmark.
And they said, or the penalty, or to refresh that conversation, they said they call May, like on May the fifth, and some, they said it May.
And then, they said, or the penalty were to refresh that conversation, and they said they call May, like on May the fifth, and some, they said that May told her that the mortgage company paid the taxes, that it was taken care of. She said she did.
And it was the bank, paid by the bank, not the person, check, and it was back, I think, to the bank, so there was about a three month delay in there, and they had moved from, out near here to Brandon and Bell, and, I mean, it is just a comedy of errors.
Well, if, if the board finds that, that there was error involved, they can, you can, you can void the sale, and, uh, you go back and look at the taxes.
My question would be, do you have another situation like that? What would you normally do in a situation like that?
Well, she said that was the only one that, hey, she had some more, that was the only one that sent the check, and I had a lot more. She and I talked about it, it was a state one, I'm, it's nothing too material, I didn't know.
I don't wanna do something for, I mean, like Jethro said, Tony, the law is pretty much strict, and if this happened again, I won't see the same person, if, if, I, I'd like to see the same process, if you have a couple of again, I mean.
Well, anybody, the bank, so no word, cause they had the mortgage, the bank sent the check.
Bank sent a check?
No, 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 by understanding that, it's, it's one of those deals where you get on the, get on the computer, and you do it, like a ACH check, or something like that? Uh, my wife won't let me get on her bank.
Wonder what?
She don't want to see it, she's, I forgot this recording. She's fantastic.
Because I can tell it all.
I'll take my coverage. But. It's, it's, it's my understanding that, that that's what happened, and I, I think there was a, there was a, a difference of recollection as to conversations that were had between the taxpayers and individuals in the tax assessor's office.
I think it was like three months before they were aware that the taxes were not paid, they felt they were paid.
Could you be in legal counsel, what's your recommendation?
Was it any error was made by?
Tax office.
So, who, who, who do you believe?
I'm like Ken, I actually know the Holy Fields, I don't think they try to beat you out of that. But if we do, more than for one person, from this point forward, we need to make sure that we do, and everybody does, and that's all I can say, but.
Well, we have to turn it now, or we may, before we can do anything.
Well, it, it, it comes down to due diligence. If, if I, if I send in a payment, and then I'm not told that that payment was rejected, then how would I know to go back and remedy that? Uh, so, so that, that would be my question, were they, were they, I mean, did they, did they have knowledge, uh, constructive or act?
They were trying to do the right thing.
And for y'all, then, but, it's not just fifteen dollars, when it goes to the tax sale, that kicks it up about eighty more bucks, when it goes to the sale, and comes to my office, what's left, and so, probably closer to a whole over a hundred dollars in the county, it's not.
If they told you they were willing to write a check, or totally, they were willing to write another check today for the taxes.
That's, that's my understanding, I, I, I talked to the Holy Fields about it, nor have I talked to, to, to May about it, I've just talked to the people that, that were here, that, that.
They wanted to pay last time when they were here, wouldn't accept, wouldn't be accepted, except the amount.
Well, can you accept it if it's gone to the tax sale?
You, you, yes, I mean, mistakes are, are, are made, whether it be mapping mistakes, or, or, or other mistakes every time, I mean, when you have that many parcels planned, and we've got our mapping department, contract, you got this. Tax sales voided off time, uh, but they're always voided because it was, there was some type of internal mistake, uh, you know, parcels are, are mapped incorrectly.
Well, uh, you say you had talked to her, either one of, for I, hold on, anything, I want to hear from both of, I want you to talk to both of them.
I can do that.
And then, whatever, you know, out of legal counsel, that's what I wanna do.
Okay.
I'm not calling. I'm good with that, I mean, I, I said, I know they ain't trying to beat us, I just, I hate it happening like that, whatever happens.
Problem, problem that not, I mean, I don't, my thing is, I don't wanna jump and do something that just come up again next year, you have to do something different, I don't, I mean, all that freedom of laws, when something happens, like things in play.
May didn't do a thing wrong, based on what I heard, that the letter, the envelope came in, was postmarked after the February of one date. I guess my point there is, it would have seemed like it would have been pretty easy, and I know they can't do it in all situations, to try to pick up the phone and call these people and say, hey, we got your money, but it's.
Taxing more dollars.
But it's four days late in, in order to accept it, I need another fifteen dollars, twenty-two cents or whatever, that's why we, in government, give such a bad, like, eye.
Well, on that ACH, on, on those, on those bank checks, we, they may have done the check request prior to the, to deadline.
To the date, and just didn't get mailed out there, that's the bank's fault, where it falls back on them, and then, they property, they have my tax again, so, but I get what Ken's saying, I think.
I, I'll, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, do you have anything else? Uh, Mike, I see you.
Probably.
Larry.
How, how are you, sir? Uh, how are you? Last, um, time y'all went, did y'all do that memorandum of understanding, before we get that extra fifty dollars for the poll workers?
Yeah.
I did do that, okay. And, uh, Larry Gritz, of course, you know, he's our.
Well, I brought that up last time, and they said they'd already done it, I didn't think they had done one, so.
I, I don't know, just, I just need a copy of it on the minutes.
We done, we done made the whole ass.
That's worth fifty dollars. Thing I had last time was a hundred and twenty-five dollars, something that the Secretary of State was putting out for new poll watchers, is what I had.
Okay, so if it's not in the minutes, we can do it again?
Well, I didn't hear nothing about no poll watcher, I know, we know, the fifty dollars.
The one I had last week was for poll watcher, did you not get anything on that?
Not poll watchers, they didn't pay for poll watchers, poll watchers.
They had something to that effect, I still got it on my desk, but it don't. I'm writing, whatever y'all want me to write.
And I say it, poll watchers.
No, no, no.
Poll, it's on.
Poll workers, baby. So, anyway.
I'm gonna pay the poll cap, right on.
Hey, look here, uh, Larry Gritz, this, I, I take out a new, we're not, we're using hours doing what we used to have to do, and he would have asked about twenty-five to thirty dollars now, which is not gonna be a couple hundred bucks, but that top, just wanting to do that, I'm sure.
I, I mean, it's, you, you have that CARE Act money, that's what it's for, you know?
Well, I mean, that CARE Act money, it'd be going towards you, so, that's gonna be.
All right, could we get a most to that thing? Uh, do you have something else that we, you put all in one moment?
Well, that would be fine, and, uh, election commissioners, that's not that, now, we have a resolution, it used to be the resolution board that came in, kind of, if ballot didn't make, wouldn't, wouldn't scan, resolution board had to do what you could do it, but now, all the absentee's used to go to all the precincts, and they always decided to accept or reject them, now, the absentee's are standing at courthouse, which is very right thing to do, and this, that's, and that's the T slash resolution board's gonna be doing that, and there's two groups of threes that's working on that, and y'all can give you those names.
That, that poll closes?
Though, actually, that process can start as early as seven o'clock that morning, we're not gonna start, we're gonna, they'll go ahead in that afternoon, and start, uh, accepting and rejecting at four o'clock, and not gonna open until seven o'clock, okay, that's just our, you know, just the wisest thing to do, or we're not seeing how people voted prior to an election. Well, you're, we'll see how the person voted, because of how they'll be open to be open soon, but, uh, but you can't see any type of results or anything, we just don't wait till seven o'clock to do that, and then scan, but, uh, which, they usually would come in about seven thirty that night, and work till about nine, and now, they'll come in about three o'clock that afternoon, and we'll go do a training, and at four o'clock, start the process, so, they'll be here from about three till nine, they were making forty dollars a day, and they were at, election commissioners won't give you fifty dollars a day, so, that's ten dollars, ten dollars each, times six, sixty bucks.
They're gonna have a load on them.
Think like.
Yeah, they ain't just.
See, well, we had, wanted to go downstairs, we had about fifteen people in line at one point, right now, it wasn't anybody, just seeing what I left, but.
Those people don't vote, I should tell you.
We've had over, we've, we've probably had over, probably, would be surprised if nothing, three fifty, four hundred, that's been set up, and, so, and the most, I think.
About forty percent, I thought, with.
And most of the time, we usually run about, the largest argument will cost about three hundred absentee's.
You got a month left.
Oh.
So, basically, Larry Gritz, up to thirty, and the resolution board, up to fifty from forty.
All in favor?
All right, thank you, Ben.
Got it, Joe? Did you say sixty on the resolution board?
Fifty, fifty.
We need to do something for the list?
Oh, Mike.
What, uh, Sylvia, Miss Sylvia's spot, what, 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 you don't do all that?
Her what?
Her.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, you're sorry?
Yeah, Mar.
Just a law first, but.
Yeah, she, she sat down at Ben Oliver's, yeah, she sat down at Oliver's.
Just wanna make sure we want.
We're few, we, tomorrow, well, we can stay at ten o'clock.
Where's that, Mike?
That, the, uh, Ben Dr. Cemetery.
I think Oliver's been taken care of.
Was that thing, that, Mar?
I love it, we, we can do that.
We didn't take you that thing, you know?
Yeah, twenty-four, almost twenty, yeah, almost twenty-four years you served.
Twenty-four.
See, well, she's sharp as a tack too, that, she did a great job, sure. What's that?
She went through.
Yep, yep.
She took two of them.
And somebody said she always, like, she stepped out of the magazine, too, whatever you saw, always looked sharp.
I ain't gotta worry about that. Mud and track.
I'll forget that motion.
Not on the month.
I do. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Charles and Dick.
Charles and Joe.
I did a joke, Joe, Joe, yes.
You recall Monday, Nick.
Okay, what else? Six to the night.
I think y'all talked about that, sure, they all, they are.
That's, we're, all three of them trying to, and, 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 uh, Bridget's at somewhere else.
Our, our part time, man.
Is he going too?
Yeah.
Jake, I don't know, he handles it. I don't know, I don't, I don't know about that, too, what can we do when somebody comes down for address?
It was mandatory training for those, for all of us.
Can we find somebody to keep the door open, like if somebody needs it, now, one address, four, that's what I gotta think about, I suggest you go there. That may not mean nothing to do about it, but if you could, it'd be nice to at least have a door.
I'm sure we'd find somebody.
Anyway, just a concern.
See, you might come.
People might be on that large hour, get a nine-one-one, and go around and push on the doors, lock.
See, all the officers, you gotta sign that thing now, pass it around.
Right. So. Okay, I think this one, I'm, I'm, we're gonna talk about the, uh, the silver problem. Steady. The, Mr. Buddy, word on this concrete back, we think he crushed, or eventually, the, the pipe has crushed, uh, we had run a camera in, and it's a place or two that is crushed, and to just repair the pipes, we had two quotes, one of them was like forty-eight hundred, and the other was like forty-nine hundred, so, time right, Kenny, and that doesn't include, uh, tearing down concrete or pouring the concrete. And my suggestion was speed it up, like, be a counter project.
Why don't we, instead of doing that, why don't we, uh, get, get hold of the mayor, or you can find out, junk, as long as he goes and puts the liner back in, it swells and backed up, that way we ain't got much time for you.
Uh, and this is, this is a cast iron pipe, and I looked, I was there when they ran the camera, the whole bottom of it is rut, and that's why it's keep stopping up.
But, but if we put that liner in, like, chunky, I mean, it'd be worth asking, what do you think? We know what they call a pipe, now, we did put a liner in, but you gotta have something there to put a liner in.
Well, well, isn't.
I mean, he can go in and rotor root in places, and you know, we done what they call a pipe burst, and it did mess in this city, we still gotta run a line through it, pull it off. I mean, I say something look at, before we do bust up this country.
I mean, that, because it's, it's four inch, going into a six inch, and, I mean, it's the only plan, but when you do that liner, your four inch is gonna go to about two, two and a half.
Yeah, and it already clogs up easily, but we had a lot of cast iron that's deteriorated this year.
Right, it may not be working, I'm just saying that for an option, it may not be nothing, yeah, but you wouldn't have to tear it, it does a sparkers by it, I did, it'll go over, goes on.
It's, it's right behind, I don't know, it's gone, right, to this manhole right here.
Was he able to get all the way down there to the silver road?
Yep.
And it was okay down there?
No, all of that from, or, it changed over from a four inch to a six inch, oh.
I mean, to the manhole then, all that, well, we talked about that earlier, that it was, that's where it was hanging.
If we decide to replace it, all you had to do is cut a two foot strip off on the concrete.
I don't think the shit cost no five thousand dollars to do it.
You're gonna cut in that concrete, like.
No, no, we gotta do the concrete, we do this right, that's just them digging it up, putting new pipe in.
That did not include them digging it up, that was the county doing it.
Yeah. What's, what's that, what's that costing you?
Must be.
Forty-eight, forty-eight hundred.
For, for them doing what, you're putting a pipe in? Forty, how, how far?
It's not that far, sure.
Forty feet at most, forty-eight hundred feet, and they're not gonna take the concrete, no, really, that's just, that's just putting, taking the old pipe up and putting it deep right down.
I'm glad you're gonna do something, all right? You're gonna be surprised, we done a couple hundred pieces, no concrete, forty thousand dollars.
You all did?
Yeah.
What's that?
It wasn't sitting, that's the thing, I'm gonna tell you this. I mean, I don't know, I went from just past nine.
The ones we replaced, we replaced?
Yeah, you can probably go, go back and scan for it.
What you thought is all, yeah.
Well, I know some of that's nasty, that's all.
Well, we've got, we're gonna have to make a decision, all of the costs, the, when that camera went in there, I mean, that whole bottom of that pipe is.
This process is not the first money we spent on that, it's three, four more times we've done spent, though.
I got no problem with this. Now, you gonna play five years more?
Do that, or do you?
No. We couldn't go.
We're gonna have to take it out, we, like, that's right.
That's all.
That's right, that's, that's what I thought. So, what about?
I read it, I read it, I read it, I read it, I read it down there, when I cut that rope out here, it's loaded, burned a little blade that I didn't use.
Everybody's busy, I know.
Do we know what Hallworth's telling for the thing?
The Wayne's still working on that, according to Steve's conversation.
Well, I need to.
Let's have a conversation with him.
He needs.
Check court time.
He needs a copy of the minutes certified by you, that shows how much all the bids were, and who, you awarded the bids.
Yep.
We checked court time, when, when.
Cause I've got three days this week, but mine is not the regular court, so they can park somewhere else.
Yes, yours, yours starts in the, right?
Yeah, but I've got three special days this week, and there's some next week, but, uh, let's just be, we'll, we'll make things work, that's gotta get done. I bet you we done spent fifteen thousand or more on that thing.
And we went. I'm not saying it's hard to do that. It's, it's, it's always, hey, it's all done, is, was it whole, a week or two, I mean, does anybody know?
It's, it's been like this since last winter.
Can we get the city to go to Rudy Forrest, I mean, they got stuff, they, they can keep it open. I mean, they got stuff that, they can keep it open.
Well, that's all we're gonna do, they're coming and telling us, uh, I'm not coming in to figure.
Well, the city will probably do that for us. They got one right there.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's nothing that's gonna, I mean, if you stop again, you just gotta ring it out again. I don't think there's nothing like that.
No, what I'm trying to say, and I can't speak for one thing, we need about two or three more weeks before we jump off on something like that and have to lose.
I think that'll be fine from what I saw up in there.
I don't, one, one month, you can't hold a shooting, I just, I'd hate for my guys off what we doing till we get completely done with it.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. I think we can survive. If that's everything, we can most to, to tone.
That's solid waste fees, that's for the year just ended, if you look up at the top on the right, uh, that's the total fees collected, including tax collector, if you look, it's up about fifteen, twenty thousand over into the highest previous year.
So it is working. Don't test it, so it won't. It is working, you know?
That number over that.
Is, is up that western, Steve? And the, uh, and we still got, what, three months to go? This, have, it's estimated, what those three months gonna bring?
That's the fiscal year.
Okay.
And that's what's.
No, ESCO and Blazin' Boy are gonna be down here, they'll be in the landfill, county on the mound.
But they in that number, right, is that just rubbish?
That's, that's property.
Half on the.
Those houses.
Half down.
And the second, the rubbish per bid is gonna be contractors that go across the scale. That third, when the landfill accounts, gonna be ESCO, then Asplun, then Blazin' Boy.
So. You think the ring is down?
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not.
That's just a little.
No, that's, that's about the year.
But this one figure was just on top of that, was it though?
That's a problem. I heard that it's working.
So we usually, we picked that up now, yeah, is that the start? Then we went to May Venter.
Right, right. Looks good?
Don't talk about it, they love it.
Anything else, Jethro, you have anything?
No. Did you want, you brought up something about it earlier?
Oh, yes. Uh, I've worked with the Decatur telephone board out here, they look at much more than I thought they'd do that. And they're telling me that if we was walk over to Decatur area, we'd have a, don't believe. Looking at it like that saves you money, if nothing else.
Well, we need to. We need to look at it, I mean.
Can Steve call over and talk to it?
We, we pay them each month. Yep, it's called, they, we're using their duck or however they say it.
If we can find out, we can do away with that and go straight to them, it's gotta save us some money, if nothing else. Right?
It's worth looking at. Uh, so Steve, and, and you're thinking, you're thinking we are already doing that, is that what you're saying?
No, we signed the contract, we're able to provide fiber to, to the county.
Let's find that contract and let's go.
Pipe is a, it's a, could we actually, yeah, we'll pay them, they wants to pay them for them.
And where I should, Steve gonna check on that one thing. Something. Nothing else?
Kenny, that's next Thursday, we're gonna come back to fifteen.
Oh, yeah, the, uh. The bracket, we got.
What, how many fifty thousand?
Yeah. To, to, what we looking at, doing something out and doing, doing something out here. That grant's gonna run out next year and we haven't used it. Do we wanna go ahead and make that purchase? I think, uh, excuse me, I think you need to look at that grant and see what it's gonna cost us in addition to that grant. I think you gonna find it's.
It's gonna be some money, but it's still, that'll be that much of what the total would be.
And you gonna have the property. That's right.
I say.
Yeah, just don't let. Don't you agree? And what did they tell you, Jason, on that permit?
Four?
Eight.
Three.
Three. Plus they gonna keep the profits from the timber supply.
Just think about it, let's, let's leave it for, before we make that decision.
Sure we get, we talk about.
No.
I'll make a motion, Charlie.
You got a second, Charles?
I'll vote for it.
I'll take it.
Oh.
Good to see you folks, so.
I had to leave at halftime, I couldn't stand the rest of them.